Welcome to the September 12, 2023 City of Apopka Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. If you will all please stand for a moment of silent prayer and the pledge. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Each agenda item will have a time for public speaking. If there is anyone here who wishes to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to be recognized. Seeing none, we'll move on to the first item. Shops of East Shore Retaining Walls Variants. This is a quasi judicial, so I have to ask, has anyone on the board had any ex parte communication on this matter? Oh, I skipped the minutes, didn't I? Oops, we go back. Okay, sorry. All right. Hey, it's a short agenda, I'm hungry. Meeting minutes from August 8, 2023. We need an approval or a motion for that?
Make a motion.
Thank you. Have a motion by Commissioner Mont. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. As I was saying, has anyone here had any ex parte communication on this matter?
No.
No.
All right. Summary, the owners of Shops East Shore LLC, applicant Shops East Shore LLC, care of Jamie Bennett, planning and entitlements manager, Jordan Draper P.E. Location, northeast corner of Okoye Apopka Road and Keane Road. Ms. Sanchez.
Good evening, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to allow a maximum height for retaining walls up to 10 feet in lieu of six foot, of six foot height maximum, as well as the slope of four to one in lieu of 10 to one maximum at the, within the shops at East Shore Land Development. The shops at East Shore is located in northeast corner of Okoye Apopka Road and Keane Road. The applicant is requesting a variance from Land Development Code Section 5.5.11 to allow the maximum height of up to 10 feet and as well as a slope of four to one in lieu of 10 to one maximum. You can see on this depiction, Stormwater, the proposed retaining wall along the Stormwater Pond is requested for wall height over six to be constructed with graphic system. They are also asking or requesting for the northern wall that you see up there on the northern page of the site, requesting a slope of four to one between the tiers and slope above and below the wall will be 10 to one. Irrigation removed and plantings will be updated. Plantings will be water, will meet water wise standards of the city. The eastern wall request is for wall height of 10 feet to be constructed with graphic system or similar F dot approved system. Middle wall, the request is for wall height of nine feet to be constructed with graphic system as well or F dot approved system. The variance process requires planning commission to make an initial determination best on the above criteria. And also make another determination on whether or not a hardship exists based on the applicant's response to the next set of variance criteria included in the staff report. The DRC does not have any objection to this variance request, however, if the walls are not installed with the graphic system, the alternative shall be subject to city engineer approval. Planning commission shall decide one of the following decisions, approve the variance, approve the variance subject to modification or condition, or denial of the variance. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff?
I do.
Commissioner Washington.
Good evening. What is a graphics system?
I'll defer that to our city engineer.
You've probably seen them on interchanges, the blocks of concrete on the side of the interchanges. That's graphics.
Hey, Richard Earp, city engineer. So a graphics wall is a wall that's been approved by the Department of Transportation, and they vet wall systems and everything the Department of Transportation approves. So this is a big, heavy, concrete block wall that is resistant to erosion and everything else DOT would want it to be resistant to.
I've got a question.
Commissioner Dumey.
So whenever we met with an approved, recommended approval of this last year, I believe there was a discussion about the variance, I'm sorry, with having enhanced buffering along that back wall. How does this impact that and is that still a condition of the project? Because we did talk about enhanced buffering needed between the grocery store and the property.
Right, the enhanced buffering is on the eastern wall right there. There's no, there was no discussion with staff, between staff and applicant about changing whatever enhanced buffering were approved for the eastern boundary on the grocer's piece. It's really the landscaping on the northern wall that they're proposing to, to add.
Okay, so just walk me through this then. So the, the wall, I'm talking about the one specifically behind the grocery store, because that was where we had the concerns the last time.
Correct.
And that looks like in lieu of maybe buffering, you're going to have a 10-foot-high wall that would separate the properties. Is that what I'm seeing on this?
No, it's not in lieu of, it's not in lieu of, the enhanced buffering will still be there.
It'll be on top of the wall?
Good afternoon, council members and chairman. I, we got a graphic I think that will show you. So there's been no, this will have no impact on that enhanced landscaping plan that was required along that east wall. One of the drivers of going and seeking these variances to go from six to nine feet or nine and a half feet, especially along that eastern wall and the, the pond, what we're calling the pond wall, was to protect those existing trees that are on the neighboring properties. And let me just go to the graphic that's going to illustrate that. It is this one. So that is that east wall. It's very similar to what was shown to you during the PD approval and major development plan. So the wall actually falls down into the commercial retail component of the project, and that's really back a house of Publix. And, you know, obviously, this is an illustration, but it shows you that, that landscaping is still up on that top tier, which will act as a buffer to that neighbor, as well as it, you know, obviously, this is a demonstrative aid, but it shows that the trees will be retained. And by allowing us to have a two-tier system with only, with a nine-foot section and a standard six-foot section, that cuts down on the potential of number of tiers and cutting back and where it could actually impact the drip lines of those trees and maybe over time influence their health. So we believe this is a better system. It's actually going to have less of an impact on our neighboring properties.
Yeah, I mean, I, from my perspective, this is a better solution, which we're posing today, as far as the enhanced buffering goes, I think this is better.
Right.
I appreciate you showing this, because as I was looking at this, that was the one, I'm familiar with this location, because I live actually fairly close. And my one question, which you've clearly answered, this was all essentially for the topography and the topography of that lot, and you're making this now usable.
Yeah.
To do what you're doing.
Yes, a very challenging site. We're dealing with a, up to a 68-foot change in elevation across the site from kind of that southwest corner working north, northeast. So there are retention, most, and most importantly, most of these walls are all of the walls in which we're seeking variances either face into the project or are internal. So this isn't something that a neighbor is going to be looking at from, in terms of the variance for the heights of the walls.
Thank you.
Any more questions of the applicant?
Yes, I have a question.
Commissioner Ryan.
What are the setbacks on these walls?
You meaning what's the width of the tiers?
No, from the property line.
I'll look to our civil engineer, Jordan Draper with Kimberly Horn, who's been working on the technical details.
This is, yeah, Jordan Draper with Kimberly Horn. This has been varying, so I think we have, let me check this section, greater than, greater than 12 feet. 12 foot is the minimum on this eastern edge. So it's 12, between 12 and I think it goes up to 20. Yeah.
And how do you keep the water from going underneath the wall? How do you handle the drainage on that 12 feet of land?
So in this location, the, the topography is draining from south to north. There's a pond to the north of our property. So all that's sheet flowing to the north. So our wall is elevated such that it's just matching that existing grade. And again, it's pushing away from the wall to the north to a pond, existing pond.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any more questions of the applicant? All right, seeing none, open it up for public discussion. Does anyone here from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm fine with bringing forward the motion to approve this variance as requested.
Motion by Commissioner Dumey. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Pardon me, planning commission?
Any opposed?
I'm sorry, pardon the interruption, Andrew Hand, city attorney. I just do want to point out that this particular agenda item does require particular findings be made, so I would just ask that if, if the motion is to approve it, that the findings just include that all of the conditions set forth in the staff report are adequately met.
Okay, fair enough. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this motion, given that all conditions set forward and our findings are met.
All right. amended motion by Commissioner Dumey. Do I have a second?
I'll second it again.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. If we need specific language to be read on the thing, we probably need that available to us up here. If we need, if it needs to be a specific statement on the approval at the end of the thing, we need to have that included in our report or made available for us. Commissioner Dumey has the wing of there, he doesn't have anything in front of him.
Understood.
Second item. Site plan, The Ridge Parcel Nine Major Development Plan. Owners, KS Apopka Center Line Development LLC. Location, 1885 Boy Scout Road. Ms. Sanchez.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of The Ridge Parcel Nine Major Development Plan. The subject property is located at 1885 Boy Scout Road, west adjacent of Breckenridge Subdivision, approximately 40.5 acres in size. Major development plan is the northernmost parcel of The Ridge PD and proposes the development of 41 single-family residential lots up to two stories in height. The applicant offers front-loaded lots with a minimum lot width of 55 feet and rear-loaded lots with minimum width of 32 feet and typical living area of 1,900 square feet. Approximately 26.5 acres of the project area is wetland and will be preserved as such. Open space and stormwater areas are located, are located adjacent to the wetland limits, buffering the wetland to the north. Access to Parcel Nine is on Boy Scout Road via Street I-9, I'm sorry, J-9, through Bronson Peak Residential Subdivision, also known as The Ridge Parcel Two. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of The Ridge Parcel Nine Major Development Plan, subject to the findings in the staff report. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff?
I've got one minor question.
Commissioner Ryan.
The alleyway that goes from, I assume that goes from west to east is one way?
It's typically one way, yes.
And then go west to east?
West to east. That's correct.
Thank you.
And more questions of staff? The applicant here, do they have a presentation?
Hi, good evening, John Prowl at VHB. We're here just in support of the project. Appreciate staff working with us, and if you have any questions, we can answer those.
Any questions of the applicant?
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. If anyone from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend the approval of The Ridge Parcel Nine Major Development Plan, subject to the findings in the staff report.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Mont. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Site plan number two. Apopka Town Homes Plat, applicant Harris Civil Engineers LLC, care of Richard A. List P.E. Location, north of Seventh Street, south of East Street and West Alabama Avenue.
I'm going to just do a real quick intro. We've got, we've got six plats. These are basically the legal recordation of the property. These are, these are projects that have already been approved, so the, but we do have to go through the process of approving the plat at, the planning commission and city council.
All right, Ms. Sanchez.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of the Apopka Town Homes Plat. The subject property is located north of Seventh Street, south of East Street and west of Alabama Avenue, approximately 2.5 acres in size. Apopka Town Homes Plat is for consideration of a townhome development that comprises of 24 lots, a common area and drainage tract. Access to the development is on Sixth Street. The plat is consistent with the construction site plan approved by the Development Review Committee on October 6, 2021. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Apopka Town Homes Plat. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Any questions of staff? Seeing none, this applicant here, do they have a presentation?
No, sir.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of The Apopka Town Homes Plat, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Washington. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number three, Crossroads at Kelly Park, Phase 1A Plat. Applicant Polos and Bennett LLC, care of Mark D. Stile P.E. Location, south of Onditch Road, west of Effie Drive and north of Kelly Park Road and east Round Lake Road. Ms. Sanchez.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of The Crossroads at Kelly Park Phase 1A Plat. The subject property is located south of Onditch, west of Effie Drive, north of Kelly Park Road and east of Round Lake Road, approximately 31 acres in size. The Crossroads at Kelly Park Phase 1A proposes to create 175 residential lots as well as nine tracks for open space and amenities. Access to the development is proposed on Kelly Park Road via Spine Road, as well as connections to the proposed and future developments to the south, north, west and east adjacent properties. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of The Crossroads at Kelly Park Phase 1A Plat. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff? Anyone have questions of the applicant? If anyone from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval of The Crossroads at Kelly Park Phase 1A Plat, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Dumey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Washington, you win. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four, Laurel Oaks Plat. Owners, KB Homes LLC, applicant Kimberly Horn and Associates, care of Brian Ashby P.E. Location, north of Joey McGuckin Road, east of State Road 429 and west of Plymouth-Sorrento Road. Ms. Sanchez.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of The Laurel Oaks Plat. Property is approximately 41.2 acres in size. Oaks Plat creates 121 single-family residential lots and five tracks for stormwater, landscape and amenity. Plat is consistent with the major development plan approved by city council on September 7, 2022, and the construction site plan approved by the Development Review Committee on May 2, 2023. One of the proposed access points of the development is shown along Plymouth-Sorrento Road. Additionally, an internal roadway is proposed to connect with, to the north to future development and plan thoroughfare that will also connect to Kelly Park Road and align with the access of the Winding Meadows North Residential Subdivision, south adjacent. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of The Laurel Oaks Plat, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and surveyor. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff?
Yes, I have a question.
Commissioner Ryan.
The width of the lots, can you tell me what they range from?
Jim, do you recall the width of, the width of Laurel Oaks? 60.
I believe those are 55s and 60s.
If I recall correctly on the approved MDP and CSP, I think they're 60. There are no alleys on this.
Yeah, correct.
And that's consistent with what's going on south of it, with just Winding Meadows as well.
55, there's some that are small, but 55.
No, I think these are all 55s and 60s, because we, if it was less than 55, we'd have to, and this was done during that stage where we went from 55, unless they had to have back alleys, these don't have any back alleys, so that's indicative of that requirement for, at least for this plat.
Any more questions? All right. Anyone have questions of the applicant? Anyone from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend the approval of The Laurel Oaks Plat, subject to the reviews of city engineer and city surveyor.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Mont. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five. Oak View Plat, owners, Hanover Builders, Family Builders LLC, care of Jeff Watchner. Applicant Dewberry Engineers, care of Christopher J. Allen P.E. Location, southeast corner of Kelly Park Road and Round Lake Road. Ms. Sanchez.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of The Oak View Plat. Property is located in the southeast corner of Kelly Park and Round Lake Road, approximately 38.6 acres in size. The applicant has submitted the plat for consideration of creating 113 lots, as well as the entrance and spine road. It also dedicates two right-of-way tracks to the perpetual use of the public and establishes three stormwater tracks and 14 open space recreation and amenity tracks. This plat is consistent with the major development plan approved by city council on March 2, 2022, and the construction site plan approved by the Development Review Committee on January 11, 2023. The access is proposed on Kelly Park Road via Laurel Site Loop and access connection to future development on the west through Turkey Outlook Road. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of The Oak View Plat. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Do we have any questions of staff? Anyone have questions for the applicant? Is anyone from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of The Oak View Plat, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Washington. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five, The Ridge Plat. Owners, Apopka Center Line Development LLC and Apopka Development Opportunity LLC. Applicant Allen and Company, care of Bryce Elstrom PSM. Location, south of Boy Scout Road, west of Okoye Apopka Road, east of State Road 429 and Benyon Road. Ms. Sanchez.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of The Ridge Plat. The subject property is approximately 241 acres in size. The applicant has submitted the plat to create 13 lots and Bronson Lake Drive, a parallel facility to Boy Scout Road. This plat also dedicates three right-of-way tracks to the perpetual use of the public and establishes recreation tracks to serve The Ridge PD. Access points are proposed on Bronson Lake Drive, Boy Scout Road and Okoye Apopka Road. This plat is consistent with the major development plan approved by city council on October 13, 2021. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion- The recommended motion is to recommend approval of The Ridge Plat, subject to the reviews of city engineer and surveyor. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff?
Yeah, I have a question.
Commissioner Ryan.
The width sides again, can you tell me what they, what the smallest ones to largest are?
That's a separate plat.
Which?
With the single-family lots, that's a separate plat. These are just the larger lots.
Oh, these are the large one? Not the ones that are alleys? No alleyways?
Not on those.
No, the two residential developments for The Ridge PD each have their own plats. This is just, I'm creating the lots for the industrial, the commercial, and office, multifamily.
Thank you.
Any more questions of staff? Questions of the applicant? Seeing none, if anyone from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll create a motion. I recommend, create a motion to recommend approval of The Ridge Plat, subject to reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Dumey. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, Kelly Park Village Plat. Owners, KPI Partnership LLC. Applicant Polos and Bennett LLC, care of Jeffrey M. Trimble PE. Location, northwest corner of Kelly Park Road and Plymouth Sorento Road. Ms. Sanchez.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of The Kelly Park Village Plat. This was also known as Wingspan ABC Kelly Park. The subject property is located on the northwest corner of Kelly Park Road and Plymouth Sorento Road, approximately 21.3 acres in size. The applicant has submitted the plat for consideration of a mixed-use development that combines five lots and dedicates three right-of-way tracks to the perpetual use of the public. The plat is consistent with the major development plan approved by city council on March 1, 2023. The access points to the development are on Plymouth Sorento Road and Kelly Park Road. There are also proposed connections to future developments to the north and the west. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of The Kelly Park Village Plat. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff?
I have a question.
Commissioner Washington.
The, so it's mixed use, so any idea how the developer may want to use this property?
The Wingspan ABC Kelly Park, that major development, and as well as the master plan, has been approved. It's actually a combination of multifamily and commercial tracks. Right now, DRC is reviewing the construction site plan for the multifamily portion.
So there will be some commercial activity?
It's, they have set aside tracks for it, yes.
Set aside, so, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I have one question.
Commissioner Ryan.
An easy one. Are there any gas stations planned for that area?
There has none that have been proposed on this area. If I remember correctly, I don't know, does it?
Yeah, this is, this is in the Village Center, so it's not in the, the, the only, yeah, the only area that allows gas stations is the interchange, which is the primary core area on the, I believe it's primarily on the west side of the interchange itself.
So it wouldn't be permitted here?
Are there any?
Nothing planned yet.
Gas stations planned?
Nothing planned yet.
Don't you think we need some gas stations there?
It's, it's very limited access, because, you know, Kelly Park, of course, is going to be a four-lane road, and the, so, a lot of the gas stations nowadays, they seem to like that cross-access going out where they can go left or right, and the majority of all those intersections, you can only make a right-in, right-out, so.
If I lived in that neighborhood, I wouldn't want access to gas stations.
You gotta come into town.
I'm sorry?
You have to come into town.
Yeah. That's the problem. Thank you.
Questions of staff? Questions for the applicant? Anyone from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Surprisingly, no. All right, bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend the approval of The Kelly Park Village Plat, subject, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and the city surveyor.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Mott. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Have some, we don't have, anybody have any old business? All right, we do have some new business. We have a new attorney. Has everybody met the new attorney?
Andrew Hand.
All right.
Andrew Hand.
Andrew Hand, pleasure.
All right. Seeing nothing further, meeting adjourned.